Mayor and Council, I'd like to call in Councilman and Mayor Pro Tem, Andy Gibbs, to lead us in prayer, if you remain standing for the pledge.
I'd like to take a moment for everybody just to have a silence of prayer for the families of the Appalachian High School shooting, just for a moment. The archeologists, thank you for this evening. Thank you for bringing us all together. Lord, I just ask you to be with the families, the ones that are affected by the shooting that had occurred at Appalachian High School, Lord. One of the family members, Lord, was a member of our issue, Blazer family. We ask that you put your arms around each and one of them that are affected. We ask that you put your arms around all the school, the students, the teachers that were affected as well. And Lord, I just ask you to be with us as we come together to unite, Lord, that we understand situations and how we need to address them, Lord, in the right manner, so we can prevent these in the future. Lord, I just thank you for bringing us together once again, as we make decisions for this community. Help us as we do the right thing that moves our community forward. We thank you, Lord, for everything you do for us, and thank you for your arms around us and your protection. Amen, I pray.
Amen. Thank you to the Mayor Pro Tem. Going to recognize a couple of people in the audience, and I hate doing this because I always forget other people in the audience, but I want to recognize Ron Borders, who served the city and is a councilman for 10 years, Mayor Pro Tem, state representative, and just all-around good guy, good citizen of the city of Valdosta. Ron, please stand. Also, I'd like to recognize Dr. Alvarez, who's now heading up that amazing success story known as Valdosta Early College Academy. If you please stand. Now we'll move on to item two in the agenda presentation of the Georgia Municipal Association Champion of Georgia Cities Award. I want to introduce Larry Hanson. He knows a little about this room as well. He's now the CEO and Executive Director of the Georgia Municipal Association, also recently recognized as the most admired CEO in the state of Georgia as well. With him is Jim Thornton, our Director of Governmental Relations for the Georgia Municipal Association. They're here to honor Georgia State Representative John LaHood, presentation of the GMA Champion of Georgia Cities Award. And gentlemen, if you could please come forward.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, citizens of Valdosta. So I am Jim Thornton, Director of Governmental Relations for the Georgia Municipal Association. I know you, as the mayor, council, are very familiar with GMA. For those maybe in the audience who are not as familiar, GMA is a membership organization. We are a voluntary membership organization, but I'm pleased to say that all 536 cities in Georgia, including Valdosta, choose to be a member of GMA. GMA provides a number of services to our member cities, but the reason GMA was founded, and one of the principal things that we still do to this day, is advocate on your behalf. And so we advocate at both the state and federal level for issues that affect the city of Valdosta, as well as all of the other 536 cities across the state. In doing so, I manage our advocacy effort, and myself and the members of our advocacy team spend a lot of time down at the Gold Dome, working with members of the General Assembly. And we are here tonight to honor one of the members of the General Assembly, who is your representative at the Gold Dome, and delighted to have the opportunity to do so. So as you know, the General Assembly meets on a two-year cycle. So every two years, they have an election, and they meet two sessions during that cycle. So we have just concluded the 2023-2024 cycle of the Georgia General Assembly. At the end of that two-year cycle, we don't do this in the middle of the cycle, at the end of the cycle, we recognize legislators, members of the legislature, who have really made a significant difference in advocating and supporting cities across the state, including Valdosta. And one of those, they were recognizing that no one more deserving of this award than your state representative, John LaHood. So let me tell you just a little bit about why we are awarding this Champion of Georgia Cities Award to him, and then I'm going to call Larry Hanson to also expand upon the remarks and then present the plaque. So in addition to serving as your representative and one of the members of the House of Representatives, John LaHood serves as Chairman of the House Government Affairs Committee. The House Government Affairs Committee is probably the busiest committee under the Gold Dome. They hear a lot of bills, and they hear almost all of the bills that directly affect Georgia cities. So if a bill is introduced that deals with the way you operate the city, the powers you have as the city, the opportunities you have to expand and grow your community, and to serve the needs of your citizens, many of those bills, if not the majority of them, are going to go to the House Government Affairs Committee. And Chairman LaHood, chairing that committee, sees members of the GMA team in his committee every time they meet, but I can tell you that he is very receptive to us. He hears our concerns. He understands. He wants to know. He affirmatively comes to me and the other members of our team to say, how is this bill going to affect Valdosta? How is it going to affect the other cities across the state? He listens. He takes that in, and that helps shape the legislation to make sure that it is most beneficial to you and your residents. In particular, over the past two years, we have worked very closely with Chairman LaHood in that capacity on a number of bills that addressed housing issues and preemption issues and other types of concerns that are shared by member cities, but we wanted to make sure that whatever advance would be beneficial to you and be beneficial to your residents and would not just serve the special interest needs of some other constituency. And in every one of those instances, and I'm not going to chronicle all the bills, but in every one of those instances, Chairman LaHood was eager to learn. He was eager to understand how this was actually going to play out on the ground here in Valdosta and in all the other cities that he represents, as well as cities across the state. We helped shape that legislation. Some of that legislation, we worked to improve and advance. Others of that legislation that was going to be very damaging to you and the work that you do here in Valdosta, we were able to hold and not advance and not move forward. But throughout that entire process, Chairman LaHood was an advocate for you, his constituents here in Valdosta. The other issue that I would single out is the work that he's done on service delivery strategy. So as all of you know who have been here in Valdosta, there have been service delivery disputes between cities and counties. This plays out all over the state. Chairman LaHood co-chaired a study committee last fall that did a deep dive into these issues. He worked very closely with me and the other members of GMA, as well as our counterparts at ACCG on behalf of the counties. And what came out of that study committee and out of several different iterations of the bill as it moved through the process ultimately became House Bill 1407, which he introduced and sponsored in the House, passed the House overwhelmingly, as well as the Senate, was signed into law by Governor Kemp. Even though it has a delayed effective date of January 2026, and even though it's not everything GMA asked for, it's certainly not everything ACCG asked for, we think it is a good compromise piece of legislation that is going to improve city-county relations here, as well as across the state, provide meaningful dispute resolution processes, and make it easier for you to do your job and serve the needs of your constituents here in Valdosta, as well as his constituents as well there. So we are delighted to have the opportunity to work with him. He is a true champion for Valdosta, and tonight we'll present him an award, recognizing him as a champion of all Georgia cities, all of those 536 cities that we represent. Before we make that presentation, I would like to call upon somebody that I think is no stranger to y'all, Larry Hanson, our CEO and Executive Director and former city manager here in Valdosta. Larry?
Well, thank you, Jim, and it's great to be here. Great to see you all. It's certainly nostalgic to stand on this side for a change. I calculated today as I was driving down that I sat in that chair over 800 times for council meetings and work sessions, and it was a pleasure to serve the citizens of this community and serve with many of you. So I'm here tonight talking about three things: a barking dog, an overgrown lot, and a pothole. I've always wanted to do that. But as Jim said, it certainly is a pleasure to be here tonight and recognize Chairman John LaHood, who is really doing a fantastic job representing Valdosta, Lounts County, and the South Georgia area. And I can tell you from having worked and walked those halls for many, many years now, and particularly now as your Executive Director, has become a real person of influence under the Gold Dome. And clearly, his party has recognized his talent and ability, and he's being elevated to a committed chairmanship of one of the most influential committees, as Jim said, really very quickly. And it is the committee that most of local government bills go through, so it's certainly influential for us. But what has impressed me about Chairman LaHood is, number one, his integrity. You can count on him to, and he's a great listener. He's going to hear you out. He's going to be honest with you, and he's going to do what he says he's going to do. And that's really all that you can ask for. He doesn't agree with us 100% of the time. We're working on that. He's getting better. But as an example, Jim talked about the service delivery strategy. No one knows better than Valdosta and Lounts County, the challenges with that since that legislation passed in 1999. And that was a tough thing, because everybody wants to make it better, but no one wants to give any ground. But to his credit, he asked Jim and I to come down. We spent about three hours with him in his office. His wife was kind enough to bring us some lunch, and it was an amazing meal of fried fish and fried shrimp. And Jim said, I think this is where I want to retire, a fellowship home. But he listened intently and asked questions for about three hours to get an understanding of that. He became a real advocate for better government as people began to oppose different things. And he said, we need to fix this. This has been going on for 25 years. We can do better than this. We can create better negotiations, minimize conflicts. And he committed himself to that, to carry that through and cross the finish line. And he held us accountable, the cities and counties, to come to the table and negotiate in good faith. And as Jim said, he worked hard on some housing bills to prevent some preemption that could have been harmful, would have been harmful, in my opinion, to many cities in this state. So I am pleased to come down tonight because I wanted to be a part of this and just let you know, you have someone that's doing extremely well representing our community. We should be proud of that, and we should recognize him, and he's got an opportunity for more. So we need to keep an eye on him and support him as well. It's a real privilege to be here and see you all tonight. Now, Jim, I'll pitch it back to you.
Well, I think we've said, Mr. Mayor, we've said what we needed to say, I think. And at this time, I would like to present the Champion of Georgia Cities Award to your representative, Chairman John LaHood.
Governor.
And the council would mind coming down and fanning out behind us?
You can direct us to hear that again.
Wow, well, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind. I'll address the council for a minute. Thank you so much, Jim and Larry, for coming down from Atlanta to do this. And we did accomplish a lot this past session, but it wasn't me or all me. It was a team effort, for sure. Was communicating very frequently with Mayor Matheson, Councilman Carroll. Yeah, several of y'all were very involved in this, and Lounts County was very vocal and involved, too. And like Jim said, there's 536 cities across the state, and they don't all agree on exactly the right path for a lot of the legislation that we hear. But that's no surprise. You know, a lot of times at my own house, we don't agree what we're going to have to suffer. So it really just requires a good leadership and good relationships with people who can bring good data to the conversation and a good experience. And that's exactly what GMA has done, is just brought their experiences to the conversation and into the room. And like Larry said, we don't always agree, but that's okay. We still respect each other, and we, at the end of the day, are still friends and work very hard together to make the best decision for all the cities in Georgia. But you know where my heart is, right here in Valdosta. And so thankful that we were able to achieve what we did, and thank you for all the support. And we're not done. We've got a whole lot more to do, and I look forward to working with you, this council, the citizens of Valdosta, and continue to make good progress for the greater good for everybody who lives here. So thank y'all, and it's a great honor, and I look forward to doing a lot more. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Tim. Another title home to Title Town. Well done. All right, we're going to move on to item three, the approval of the minutes. Council, you've had time to review the minutes from the August 8 meeting. Are there any additions or deletions at this time? Seeing none, by acclamation, those are approved. Move on to item four, public hearing item that was on the agenda. Consideration of request to appeal to decision on a certificate of appropriateness by the Valdosta Historic Preservation Commission for demolition of two houses located at 210 and 222 East Park Avenue. We received an email this morning from Ben Norton with Northside Baptist Church asking that this request be removed from the city council agenda. There will be no action on that agenda item at this time. Move on to item five, ordinances and resolutions. Consideration of our request from the Valdosta-Lounts County Airport Authority to approve a resolution authorizing acceptance of a contract for the Georgia Department of Transportation. Richard Hardy, our city manager, will present.
Thanks, Mayor. The Valdosta-Lounts County Airport Authority desire to proceed with the project for replacement runway 422 light. The total amount for this project is $800,000. This allocation will be based upon pre-approved design, planning, and the engineering costs. The competitive bid that's received accomplishes this project. GDOT has offered to fund 75% of the allowable cost. There will be no cost to the city of Valdosta. The remaining amount will be funded by the airport authority. GDOT has prepared this grant in an amount of $600,000. A letter has been prepared and sent to the Commissioner of GDOT, confirming the airport's intent to proceed and partially fund the replacement. A proposed project schedule will be submitted to GDOT Project Manager no later than October 1st, 2024. A resolution has been prepared, authorizing the mayor to accept the allocation in order to process the documents. Staff recommends council approve this resolution.
Counsel, any questions for our city manager? Seeing none, it's yours for action.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the resolution, the statement.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you. Richard, thank you. Move on to item six. There's three purchase items in A, B, and C. Consideration of bids. If there's no objection from council, items A through C will be considered under a consent agenda. Seeing no objection, we'll move forward. John Burton, our voter pool superintendent, to present.
Thank you. First is the Public Works Department needs to purchase two new towing dump trucks due to the age and serviceability of existing towing trucks. These trucks are used for towing and dumping sway car trailers. The new vehicles will replace two 2008 model towing trucks. Four sealed bids were received on August 20th, 2024. Solid Waste Applied Technologies came in at the lowest bid, meeting specifications. I recommend that Mayor and council approve the low bid, meeting specifications of Solid Waste Applied Technologies in an amount of $259,000 and allow the Public Works Department to proceed with the purchase.
Counsel, any questions on item A? John, continue.
Next, the Public Works Department needs to purchase a new rear loader refuse truck due to the age and serviceability of the existing truck. Truck is used for commercial routes, emptying small business, trash cans, and hauling residential yard debris and junk. The new vehicle will replace a 200, well, a 1999 model rear loader refuse truck. One sealed bid was received on August 20th, 2024 by Solid Waste Applied Technologies, the amount $299,985. I recommend that Mayor and council approve the low bid, meeting specifications, by Solid Waste Applied Technologies in an amount of $299,985 and allow the Public Works Department to proceed with purchase.
Counsel, any questions on item B? John, continue.
Third, utilities department currently has a backhoe due to be bought back by the original dealer on February 12th, 2025. The new machine will be bought back after five years, meaning the net price is used to determine the winning bid. Sealed bids were received on August 27th, 2024. Yancey Brothers came in at the lowest purchase price with the highest buyback price. I recommend that the council approve the bid of Yancey Brothers in the amount of $138,765 with a net price costing the city after five years, $76,765. Allow the utilities department proceed with the purchase.
Counsel, any questions on C? John, thank you.
Thank you.
A, B, and C are yours for action.
Mayor, I make...
Mayor, I make sure we approve the request and the specifications of the bid.
Say it. A motion and a second. Any further comments on all three? Show of hands on approval, please. It is so moot. Counsel, thank you. John, thank you. Item D, consideration of bids for office supplies for the city of Valdosta. Chuck Dickens, our finance director, to present. How you doing, Chuck?
Good. How are you, Mr. Mayor?
Good.
Thank you. As we discussed Tuesday, this is a bid for the office supplies used by the various departments of the city. The bid was based on a basket of high-use items presented by the purchasing department. Bid 6-24-25 was issued, and the low bid was received from Sheffield Office Products in the amount of $21,893.07, which represents the cost for the listed basket of high-use items. That is the low bid, and we would recommend approval of that bid. I'll be happy to take any questions you may have.
Counsel. Chuck, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Counsel, yours for action.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the bid of Sheffield Office Products.
Say it.
Motion and a second. All in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you. Thank you. Move on to item E, consideration of bids for the Dogwood Drive Area Improvement Project. Ben O'Dowd, our city engineer, will be up here for a while.
Yes, sir. I'm camping out. All right. First on the list is the Dogwood Drive Area Improvements Project. As discussed on Tuesday, this neighborhood was one of the annexed islands in the mid-2000s. Since annexation, the city has installed water mains, sewer mains, and paved the streets. And the improvements were installed within a substandard right-of-way, which allowed the existing roadside drainage ditches to remain in place at council's direction. The improvement of the street system was designed and completed in 2021. Property acquisition was pursued. The final property acquisition concluded June, July of this year. The project was bid. We had five attendees at the mandatory pre-bid meeting, which you can see listed on the bid tabulation on the next page. We had one attendee to the actual bid opening, and so we had one competitive bid for the project, which came in at $6,703,48. With our standard 10% contingency for unknown field conditions, this brings the total cost to deliver the project to $7,370,382.80. For the reasons discussed on Tuesday, we believe that the price is higher due to the current market that we're in, cost of materials, as well as just contractors in the area being very busy. Staff's recommendation is not to approve the bid due to funding constraints. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Ben at this time? Ben, thank you. Don't move. Counsel, it's yours for action. Motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands.
Thank you.
All right. Counsel, thank you. Move on to item F, consideration of equitable adjustment to the contract for the West Street Area Improvement Project. Ben?
Yes, sir. The West Street Sidewalk Improvement Project was initiated in 2020. Design was completed in 2021. The project has been awarded in March, April of 2022. As y'all are well aware, there have been substantial delays to delivery of the project outside of the contractor's control due to a major relocation of an Atlanta gas and light main running down West Street. As we discussed on Tuesday, the existing eight-inch main underneath West Street was discovered to have been installed in 1942. And it was found to be prudent to go ahead and replace that steel main at the time, rather than delivering the project at risk of possibly having to cut into the brand-new road to replace the main at a later date. Due to this delay outside the contractor's control, the contractor has submitted a request for equitable adjustment to the original contract price. That request for equitable adjustment reflected an increase across a number of unit costs of $233,230. This reflects a net increase in the bid cost of 20.2%, given the inflationary construction cost environment we've been experiencing for the past two to four years post-COVID. This is not surprising to staff, and for that reason, staff is in support of approval of this request for equitable adjustment so that we can move forward with delivery of this project. Any questions?
I have one. I just want to ask you a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Because of that, what, because, like they said, when they shot that main line, are they going to have to extend the area that they are going to be using that they are going to repair to the other streets, the other outfit areas? They have to, with them repairing that line on West Street? Are they going to have to move over to other streets?
Yes, ma'am. As part of the scope of work that AGL submitted to us as part of a right-of-way encroachment permit request, that eight-inch main has been replaced, and they are now operating on the side streets that connect to West Street, and they're performing line loops. They're trying to improve connectivity, improve service flow to users in the surrounding area. So essentially, Atlanta Gas and Light took a replacement of a main. And a lot of times when you're replacing a pressurized main for a utility distribution system, there are sideline interconnections that you can either reconnect the old deteriorated lines that were most likely installed around the same time as the main, or you can at that time choose to perform a more robust rehabilitation of your system in the area. And that is the course of action that Atlanta Gas and Light chose to take. That's why they're operating in the surrounding neighborhoods. improving the system regionally rather than just improving the main and then having to possibly go back and perform more work later. Does that answer your question? Yes, ma'am.
All right. Ben, thank you. Counsel, again, yours for action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the equitable adjustment to the contract for the West Street area improvement project. Ask for any.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you. Ben, thank you. Item G, consideration of request to approve a professional services contract with advanced engineering services. Ben, present again.
Yes, sir. This is the presentation for the design of the lift station and sewage collection and distribution improvements that are proposed to be installed at the corner of Knights Academy Road and North Forest Street Extension. These sewage improvements will support, and they are part of a dual pronged approach to unlock developability within the Northern Venus Corridor within the city limits. That area has historically been experienced suppressed ability to develop due to lack of utility service. We're expanding our utility service capability in that area. And part of the two pieces to the puzzle are the Goodyear Lift Station, which y'all are well aware of, and this new lift station, which will distribute flows up over the hill and back into the city system. This lift station will also serve the proposed public safety facility that's under design currently nearby, as well as numerous neighborhoods that are currently in review and are capable of being permitted if they had utility service. Any questions for me?
Counsel. Ben, thank you. Counsel, yours for action.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this as presented. Same.
Motion and a second. All in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you. Ben? Let's move on to H, consideration of professional design services for the Scott Park and Volatant Park upgrades.
Okay. So as counsel is aware, the city received ARPA grant funding for new improvements at a number of city parks. Two parks mainly that were included in that grant funding are Volatant and Scott Park. There were a number of other park installations that were included in the grant funding. But this is a presentation of a professional design services agreement for necessary engineering design in order to capitalize on that grant funding. Specifically, at Scott Park, it would entail the design of a 300-foot baseball and softball field, as well as the construction and installation of a scoreboard to services field, as well as dual purpose tennis and pickleball courts with sight lighting, as well as outdoor fitness equipment installed along the existing fitness or outdoor trail there in Scott Park. At Volatant Park, the upgrades include installation of dugouts, new fencing and scoreboards, seven existing baseball fields, new outdoor fitness equipment around the park, skateboard park, and repaving the front parking lot of the park. Specifically, we need engineering support for the design of the baseball and pickleball field at Scott Park. And we need engineering support for the development of construction documents for the skate park at Volatant Park. We solicited the services of Level Engineering and Associates to support the engineering department in this endeavor. LEA was selected because of their depth of experience and their ability to and displayed proficiency in the design of facilities like the ones that we're looking to design here. And so for that reason, staff is recommending approval. Answer any questions.
Counsel.
So they are gonna issue you a four-year request.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, show of hands. Wonderful. Ben, don't go anywhere. Item seven, consideration of our request for extraterritorial extension of water and sewer for property located on the inner perimeter road in Loudoun County.
Yes, sir. This is a extraterritorial service agreement request for Walmart on inner perimeter road. Counsel is very well aware of this project. This is a formality in order to amend the maps appropriately. In order to have the maps amended, users that are located outside of the city limits of Alosta must request extraterritorial service from the city of Alosta. City council must approve that extraterritorial service. And then that extraterritorial service request must appear before the county commission. They must approve that same request. And at that time, the county will amend the SDS maps with the Department of Community Affairs. And this is the first step in that process. Do you have any questions for?
Counsel.
So what you're saying is once we approve this, then it goes to, if we do approve it, it goes to the county?
Yes, sir.
Right. Mayor. Ben, thank you.
So they are gonna issue you a question, sir.
Same.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you. Ben, consideration of request for extraterritorial extension of water for the Hunt Road property in Loudoun County.
Yes, sir. This is a similar request to the one that preceded it. This is for the new industry Prinsco at the west end of West Hunt. Again, this is the request for extraterritorial service. This property is located outside of the corporate limits of the city of Alosta. And I can answer any questions that you might have about the industry or about the request.
Counsel, questions? Yours for action.
Mayor, I'd like to make a request as presented. Same.
Motion and a second. All in favor, show of hands. Ben, counsel, thank you. Ben, thank you. Guess what? One more.
Last one, sir.
Consideration of request from Excelcom Telecommunications to register with the city of Alosta in order to provide telecommunications services.
Yes, sir. Excelcom is a telecommunications company that predominantly serves Alosta State University. They have submitted a request to the engineering department to encroach within the city's right of way. And as such, they're required to have a completed franchise agreement to operate and to install new utilities within the city right of way. That agreement has to be, we have to come before the city council to receive approval to authorize that agreement with Excelcom.
Any questions for Ben on this one? Ben, thank you. Finally. Counsel, it's yours for action.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the request as stated.
Same.
Motion and a second. All in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you. Again, Ben, thank you. That was a lot. Move on to item B, consideration of our request to approve the revised American Rescue Plan Act proposed projects and allocation amounts. You can only call on Chuck Dinkins for something like that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we discussed Tuesday, this is a request to reallocate the remaining ARPA funds. We have a balance remaining that is uncommitted of $534,086. And we are requesting to allocate the remaining balance to the new public safety multipurpose facility under renovation. This will provide funds for the facility as well as obligated remaining balance of ARPA by the 12/31 deadline. I'll be happy to take any questions you may have.
Counsel, any questions? Chuck, thank you. Counsel, yours for action.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this as presented. Same.
Motion and a second. All in favor, show of hands. All in opposition, same sign. Motion carries. Counsel, thank you. Chuck, come on back up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Consideration of our request to approve an amendment to the fiscal year 2024 budget for the city of Alosta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just as a point of clarity, that should say the 2025 budget, which is the year we're in. This is a agenda item to increase the transfer from ARPA, which you just approved, as a reallocation, an increase to the property tax revenue budget and an increase to the construction budget for the aforementioned public safety facility. It increases the one by $600,000. The ARPA budget as previously mentioned, and the construction budget by $1,034,086 for a net impact with general fund of $0. I'll be happy to take any questions you may have.
Counsel, any questions on that? Chuck, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, yours for action.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this as presented. Same.
A motion and a second. All in favor, show of hands. All in opposition, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Move on to item F, consideration of our request from the Alosta Loudoun County Land Bank Authority to deed the property located at Fresno Street and Forestwood Drive to the city of Alosta. Catherine Ammons, our fantastic assistant city manager, to present.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor. Counsel. So the Valdosta Loudoun County Land Bank Authority is requesting to deed over the property located on Fresno Street and Forestwood Drive. It's in their packet. Currently, the property is a retention area, and the city currently maintains it. The land bank has actually never maintained that piece of property. The property surrounds a cul-de-sac and is a barrier for traffic and appears to be, there's a water main located on it as well. So if the property is deeded over, then it would allow the city to fully control the storm drainage area, and we could possibly reconfigure the traffic pattern. So staff is recommending approval for the land bank to deed the property over.
Excellent.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Please.
Mr. Picture you're showing there, you know, you should do a fence there. Look at this. You gotta remove that so that there's a wire or anything. Police drive the property to get through. There'd be a hard way through there, but.
Yes.
I mean, that's what the citizen were asking. I'm trying to make sure I have the property standing there so they do ask me. I can answer them if that question.
And we have spoken to our engineer as well, and it will be reconfigured so that public safety vehicles will be able to go through.
All right. Catherine, thank you. Counsel, it's yours for action.
Mayor, I'd like to approve the, make a request, approve the request as presented.
Same.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you. Catherine, thank you. Now I'm going to move on to these citizens to be heard portion of the evening. It's a part of the meeting where we ask you to come forward, state your name and address so that we may have it for the record. Our policy requires you stay under three minutes so that others have time to be heard. Please direct all comments to counsel as a whole. Do not attempt to engage individual members of counsel in debate. It is our policy to follow through with your concern almost immediately. Additionally, we ask that any groups that want to address the council designate one spokesperson, again, to ensure that all have time to be heard. Having said that, are there any citizens wishing to be heard this evening? Please state your name and address.
Samantha Matthews, 4069 Colley Circle. First of all, I want to say thank you to Representative Hoodie for your support of the general assembly funding for the Children's Imagination Station. We thank you so much for that support. And I thank you personally for your support as well. I just want to bring you the status of our Children's Imagination Station. I know that's something that's in the back of your minds. Hopefully, it's in the front of your minds coming forward. We just sent out the RFP on August 30th, and we hope to have bids back by September 30th. So thank God, we are on the way. So you should start seeing building on that side of the town. And it's just wonderful development on the corner of Webster and Ashley Street. This will be 10,000 square feet of hands-on engaging learning experiences that stimulate curiosity and creative creativity in kids as well as fostering essential foundational skills. More than, we're more than halfway through the fundraising phase. So you can see that by that big thermometer that's on the corner of the street, that intersection. You know, the interesting thing is the economic impact of children's museums on a community is quite impressive. More than $5.5 billion annually nationwide. And interesting, more interesting is 40% of that, more than 40% of that occurs outside of the museum walls. This is happening in retail industry and in, you know, graphic design and different hospitality services. So that's really going to be exciting for our community. Do you know that 90% of a child's time is spent outside the classroom? So this is exciting for us because we get to have that time with our children. And while play is often talked about as if it were a relief from learning, research shows that play is learning for kids. And so we're so grateful to be a part of this. We also, if you have any questions about that, please give me a call because I got one more minute to talk about all the things that are happening in your next week in the city. So we have a beautification project on our corner of the community on Saturday that's taking place from 7 to noon. That's after we get done serving water to our first responders for the 9/11 run. And we have a classical music concert on September 10th. That's Tuesday from 7 to 9. Please come out. This is Julian Garjulio. He is an exceptional pianist, world class. He's at Carnegie Hall, just amazing by way of Paris, France. And we have Two River Station on September 13th as part of our Music in the Art Park Concert Series. I know many of you attend that. That is in partnership with Alosta State University Student Life. So we're having, we're actually part of their parents' day. So it's a great partnership. We're trying to do more partnerships like that with our community. And then we have a literary fair on September 14th from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. I hope that you come out to that. It's a celebration of local authorship, including our student authors. And it's just, it actually celebrates and launches our annual writing programs for both children and adults. Oh, three seconds is fair. Thank you for your service. I appreciate you so much.
Well done.
Any questions?
No questions. Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time? Who wants to follow that up?
Good evening. My name is Dale Lucas. I live at number five of Beena Circle, Alosta, Georgia, in the Level 6 Division. And I have a concern. One of my neighbors, she like from her in the house until like an hour, hour event on the weekend. And I was wondering is that was legal? And if there's anything the city council can do anything about it? Because like, really.
That's your concern?
The neighbors in the area is complaining about it. And we surprised they showed up today. Wants their opinion about it.
Yeah. If that's your concern, just please stay till after the meeting, and you'll be met with by the city manager, the assistant city manager.
City get him, so.
So the assistant city manager and the city manager will meet with you as soon as the meeting's over.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time? Seeing none, I'm going to end that portion of the meeting and proceed. I apologize.
Hi. Hello, Mr. Mayor, City Councilman. I'm here to speak about my neighborhood and a bunch, well, on Willow Way. We have a problem with the neighbor that's having parties. On, on our street, they call it a clubhouse, and she's using that house to have a party from 6:30 in the afternoon to 6:00 in the morning. I mean, she's disturbing the neighborhood. There was, there was a recent shooting a couple of weeks ago at that party, which included adults, young adults, and children at this party. Now, we've called about the disturbance. I know that you have a city ordinance about noise and everything, but they're not obeying that. When we call the police, they have a lookout out there, and they'll turn the music down as soon as they leave. Then they turn the music back up. And I saw on Facebook where she's talking about having a rapper come over in the neighborhood. I mean, this backyard is set up like a nightclub with tables that providing drinks. There, you could pay for food and drinks. So she don't have any liquor license to be holding those kind of parties in a neighborhood. And it's, and most of the citizens in that neighborhood are between the ages of 60 to 90 years old and some with health issues and everything. And it's just become a big problem for us. We've been living in this neighborhood for, I've been in this neighborhood for 64 years. I've never encountered anything like that. She said, you all will get over it on the, I, she's, I think she was basically on the news recently talking about this incident. She said, Alosta Police Department is paying $800 of her money and, and all kinds of stuff that's going on. And we're just trying to get, you know, get somebody to do something about this. Because we like to have a, we've always had a safe neighborhood, no gun shooting, no, no drugs or anything in the area. And we'd like it, like it be that way.
We'd like that, too. Well, please hang around after the meeting. We'll come to you. Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time? Please. Come forward and state your name and address.
My name is Lakeisha Lyra Maisian. My address is 2513 Orlando Drive. My concern is, um, this has been the second, May 2nd, September 3rd. My daughter was murdered. And stipulations in trying to get in touch with someone with the victim's family being left are feeling like, you know, she had, there was an active war. you know, she had, there was an active war coming before she was actually murdered, so the steps and what's going on when you got, you know, the victims, people left behind, they have to deal with people that's out on the street that done, well, murdered their loved ones, but yet they're out amongst the street with the citizens. And I feel like that kind of causes a problem because it brings tension when you try to be humble and keep everything down, and I kind of been trying to get in touch with different people in the city to discuss it, but I haven't received a callback, so that's my concern.
Please stay after the meeting. Thank you. Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time? We'll now wrap up that portion and turn it over to Richard Hardy, our city manager for the city manager's report.
Thanks, Mayor. We have a lot of upcoming events that's taking place within the city for the month of September. Our first event, the Friday, first Friday downtown from five PM to eight PM. So come on out and enjoy the weather and the atmosphere. On September the seventh, as mentioned earlier, if you like to run, you like to celebrate, come on out for the Fire Department nine eleven memorial, five K run downtown Valdosta. It's going to start at eight to eleven, depending on how fast you run. September the tenth, six PM to nine PM, Citizen Fire Academy begins. It welcomes Class E levels, Station Eight, four fourth, three fourth, North Forest Street. September the twenty-first, having our monthly cleanup, love where you live cleanup. This, we will all meet up at one zero one North Ashley Street. Cleanup will be on East Mary Street from North Ashley to North Chu Street. Finally, we start back up our movie night. It will take place September the twenty-first, seven thirty at Unity Park. The movie will, the show will be Remember the Titans. That's all I.
Richard, thank you. Move on now to counsel comments. Counsel, I'll start at the far end of the table. Any counsel comments? It's here. Eric, please.
I know we're not supposed to direct comments to anyone in the audience, but to all of you who came up here and spoke, I want to let you know you can be heard. But I also want you to realize that our police chief and our police officers, all we can do, they break the law, is arrest. So what we need for you guys to do, reach out to these judges who are giving them funds and let them get out of molestation. Those people are lifted just like we are. So we need to make sure that we are not just, because it's not the police chief. I mean, all she can do is arrest them when they do something bad, but when they're let out of heat, that's why I'm glad Mr. Hood is here, because I was going to get a chance to talk to him about, well, he can talk to, uh, Governor Kemp about I'm trying to do something with DJ J, because our police officer, they go out and arrest someone, and they release him right back to the base. So there's, their hands are tied. I know that, I know you're frustrated, and I know it's not an issue for me, but we're tired, we're tired and frustrated that it probably too, because it's leaving us seeming like we don't care. So I don't want you to think that we don't care, but I will be there when you talk to the city, which is happening.
Eric, thank you.
No comments at this time.
It's a gift. So, ladies. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.